Are you good?
No, I'm turning myself in. I'm running.
Does he get that as well?
No, he's never hears me at all.
Six o'clock.
Welcome to the regular movement. A council workshop for the River Town Council on June 21st, 2022. I think we should just have a meeting every night. I've seen it shared by Elsaw from last night, they didn't come back, but I'm glad you guys did. So we're just going to get started with our agenda, we've got their agenda. Trudy Chakto, will you tell us the latest and greatest on the 26th bridge replacement project?
Happy to, good evening. As town council first remarked in your meeting last month, DOT will be working on I-26 bridge replacement of the two bridges, the center of the north and south over Quarry Road on future I-26. At the last council meeting, you counter offer the $25,000 for the right of way agreements, the permanent right of way, the drainage easements and the agreement for entry. And they have counter offered that $20,000. And so this is, this is an opportunity to avoid a condemnation lawsuit in order to get them what they need in order to do the bridge replacement project. As you remember, it does involve a temporary construction easement, permanent drainage easement, a permanent right of way and a right entry. The only thing that's changed from the document that you have in your, in your packet is they did realize that they would need to move some cranes around at night. And that was going to require the closure of Quarry Road for several, several days. And we needed to run that by the Public Works Police Department. The police department, because they do use that range at night, they had requested one week notice prior to the closure of Quarry. Yeah, not the public portion of Quarry Road, but the, the, the driveway, the gay portion. And so they have agreed to that one week's notice. So that's the only, the only difference. I think that, I hope that I'm not speaking inappropriately, but the town manager, the public works director and I will recommend that Duke said that $20,000 is fair and just compensation for the easement and right of way. And approve the attached deed for highway right of way and the agreement for entry and authorize the execution of those documents when it's perfectly due.
That was up from 13, right?
It started, it started at six, went to 11, y'all settled at 25. I think she countered with 15 because that was her, her, her max. Y'all were at 25 and they, they sort of compromised it to 20.
You had a sales for the town. We jumped out. Any questions, comments for the interview or the question?
Maybe not for the crane moving around?
Several, is it several, but the public works have a problem not being able to get around for a couple of days. No, yeah, they, they agreed to keep it open except for small, like 15 minute closures during the day.
Okay.
But this is, so, so this new, this new language is for nighttime closures. Yeah. And again, the police department seems, seems satisfied with at least a week's notice because that way they could schedule their trainings and whatever they gave them with the part range around that.
Any questions? Someone make a motion?
Oh, I can motion that we, $20,000 off.
Second. Oh, is there, is any ground, we just do this.
He is not.
He's not, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Give me a vote. Thank you, motion passes. Next item, Mr. Pennell and Ms. Dozier, tell us about the waterline replacement project and the actual budget.
This is Dale and welcome to, I'm glad to be here for the council meeting tonight. Wanted to talk to you about the, the waterline project that we recently received bids on. We had this project in the 2022 budget, so that meant that we created an estimate for that project back in February of 2021 at about $150,000. And this project replaces the last section of asbestos cement pipe in our system that's over on Holland Street. It replaces a two inch water line on Coleman Street that's dilapidated after many years of use. And it replaces a, a two inch water line on Shuford Road out off of Hamburg Mountain Road with a six inch line. And that two inch line had been a constant source of both leaks and water loss. We hired Weathers Dravenel to be our consultant for this project. They prepared plans, got proper permits from the DOT and from DEQ. And we went through an open bidding process and those bids were received June 1st. We had four bidders and the low bidder for the project was TP Howard Plumbing from Fairview. And that low bid amount was $349,600, which is well in excess of, of 100% higher than our original estimate. We were surprised, but not entirely so about the process based on the things that we'd been told by our suppliers and, and contractors over the last 14 to 16 months. The, and all those professionals in the, in the, in the field of waterline construction and similar fields of endeavor tell us they expect to see continued increases in prices during 2000, I mean during 1923, during 2023. And there'll continue to be supply chain issues that are affecting delivery dates and delivery schedules for materials. So although this price exceeds what's in our budget, our engineers and staff from Public Works does recommend that the, the town accept this low bid and award the project to TP Howard. I've talked with Tanya at length and with the town manager. And we have funds within the water budget in order to be able to add to what's in our current water maintenance budget to fund this project. I'd like to let Tanya speak a little bit more to that fact.
Thank you. Tanya?
Good evening, good morning, house. As Dale said, we, we budgeted $150,000 in this year's budget that will be unspent at the end of the year. So we're proposing that we reappropriate that $150 into the FY23 budget and then we'll need $199,600 in addition to meet the, the contract price. So our proposal is...
We have no waterfront.
I don't, I don't have one.
So I have nothing to propose, what do we have?
It changes the waterfront budget proposed because it adds the $199,000 to that budget. And town manager, we'll talk through a list of, of proposed changes later.
Are there any other options or approaches we can take or consider?
We could take the money out of AARP.
I'm not talking about the money, I'm just talking about the work itself. Are there other approaches to it? Does it, could it be delayed or not? Maybe answer's no, but.
Yeah, let's see. Do you think you all can speak to that?
Dale.
I'd be glad to. If you'd like for me to, I'd be glad to talk about that. Obviously, we sent a good, spent a good bit of time with the engineers. Price was going to be high and we talked about the, the, those three projects in depth and in extreme detail and with multiple site visits and multiple options. We wanted to continue to use our, our materials that we've proven to be successful for the town. So we didn't want to vary the kind of materials that might be used in the project. And we also looked at the ideas of if, if, if we thought prices were going to be high, what was the benefit in waiting and rejecting all bids and then coming back sometime in the, the next fiscal year? But that's the reason that we spent so much time with the, with the three contractor, four contractors that bid and with the suppliers that, that quoted prices to those contractors and asked them what their thoughts were. And we had heard, was prior to bidding and during bidding, that materials were hard to find, materials were hard to, to schedule delivery and the prices were going up. Almost the fact that if you, if you ask for a price on a, on a particular pipe or fitting or valve or hydrant, that price was good on the day that, that you received the price from the supplier. If you didn't make up your mind till tomorrow, then you call back tomorrow and see what the new price is. So the contractors have made an effort with this project that's supposed to be completed in a 60-day timeframe to try to anticipate with their suppliers and distributors assistance on, on what to bid for the project. And so you, as you can see on the, on the following page to the cover sheet, there's a wide variation in the prices. So we had two that were fairly close down in the 300s and then two that were much more high than, than the, than the first two. So the contractors had different ideas about what was the, going to be the prices coming up in the next 60 days or so. And so that's the reason sort of all, when you take everything into consideration that we would, we would recommend, let's get this project funded and awarded and built and, and with, with the current prices that we have.
Did they feel pretty confident that they could do it in 60 days, once we sign a purchaser?
That was a major factor in, in their bids was the project was supposed to be, once, once, the, once it's awarded, which would be sometime next month. And then we give them a notice to proceed, then the 60 days would start when, when that note, at the date of that notice to proceed. And what they're going to do if they receive the information that tonight we are awarding the project to them, they indicated that, that they're going to proceed with ordering the materials immediately, even if something happened in the next month that, that we determined we did not want to actually sign the contract, which we have the right to do. They'll use the materials on another job. But if we want this project done, now's the time.
I understand. I'm seeing the same thing at the, at this part-time job I have. I'm seeing 40% price increases and they're only giving me 15 days for me to place a purchaser at that price, or they're giving me another price increase.
I'm sure Dale, you'll communicate to us what we did. Can you make the final summary?
I'm, I'm assuming that $150,000, is that the engineer's estimate from February 2021? Or is that like a rule of law? Because that could be a reason for the discussion.
Tanya, Dale, can you answer that?
The $150,000 estimate was my estimate back in February and we, that number based on the current prices of the materials. We knew they were going up, but we had no idea what, what that increase was going to continue to be during the time period that we went through plan preparation and bidding.
You have any questions? Any questions to accept the motion?
I'll make a motion, we can proceed.
If I could put some, some words in that motion to award the bid, add the additional $199,600 to the FY23 water plant budget and authorize the mayor and town staff executing contract for this work in July, subject to staff level approval of that contract.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Is there any? Thank you. All in favor of the, you want me to say aye?
Aye.
Give me a vote. Thank you very much. And Dale, I believe you're on vacation somewhere?
I am, I was in the pool at, our lodging at Hilton Head about an hour ago, so.
You're looking very tame, I gotta tell you.
It's been a wonderful time, thank you.
Good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Finance attorney, Dozier, can you give us an overview of the fee schedule?
If I do, so real quick, you've got this in your, in your packet. And all we did was highlighting the elements, changes from prior year to make it easier. So on page three, what we start at the top of the pricing fees. You'll see the guide of the MyGov hub fees, which are $3.50 per flat fee for using to, to go online and pay your one to bill credit card. And then just which was new this year, it's a 2.9% fee. ACI Worldwide, the next one down is actually being paid out. That's our old official payment system, which we will not be renewing after February because now with MyGov payment, it's no longer need the ACI. Wanted to let you know too, that we accidentally crossed out the wrong one. I'm at the ACI, it's 314, 3.14% is crossed out. Is the current, is the new one, we should be the 2.85%.
That was my error, my, my problem.
I want to actually put on there.
Just down the right away, police fishing license, we'll see when we move that for town council direction on that. Right below that recycling fee, it's not highlighted, but that does usually change each year. And you'll see the wording there, we have to update the schedule with new changes. And they have taught us that they're going to be charging $334 fee coming here. It's $3, $3.18 this year, but it's $1.2 cents.
Should have received, and I just thought it would be about... Increases for, you must see, we simply pass that.
On bottom, page four, you see we're going to remove the fishing license as part of that violation fee. And then on page six, down to the bottom, there's plenty of planning, zoning and current portion of fees. We removed the gaming terminal fees, which are now legal. The state is going to no longer need to have that listed on our fee schedule. Right below that, on the variance application, we added the sidewalk waiver and other board adjustments to that application. Moving on to page seven, the water rates. Those just reflect a 3% proposed increase, 3% water rate increase that's proposed in the budget this year. And then on the next page, page eight. So this is one of, a couple of our bigger changes this year. You'll see under the minimum water, minimum monthly water charges, we've added a $1,000, I mean $1,000 gallon as your minimum usage. We're in a path that's been to 2,000 gallons. And we also combined the five eighth inch with the three quarter inch to be consistent with the rest of our, our fee schedule. But as we're talking about this, we look to see, you know, how many incoming customers are truly using that, you know, little amount. And we were surprised to find that we had 503 customers this past year. They're approaching 1,000 gallons or less. We have received a lot of...
Oh, single family, single person.
Yeah, yeah. And we have received a lot of requests and suggestions to lower that minimum. So that was interesting. And we also saw that we've got 1,300 customers using 2,000 or less gallons a month. Which is somewhat surprising as well. So further down on that same page, the tap charges. This is one of the few items that we actually did have to increase and that's all based on our costs. So you'll see the, the first one is going from $1,050 to $1,200. I just simply to cover all our supply costs on those items. Moving on to page nine, the top of that page, we added the waterline extension to that application fee. And then halfway down that page, the monthly charge for fire connection. This page again is just a 3% increase in the water rates. Following that are the, the community center rates, which we have proposed any changes, any changes on the community center rental fees.
And just to make sure, on page eight, when we're, right now, we currently charge everyone a minimum of 2,000 gallons. But now we're told that those who are using far less have to have their two.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what would we do if the, if the material to do the, the tap increases? Because I would expect it to increase between the next one month. Will we move or will we bring it in?
We can, we can bring it, we can bring any kind of amendment to you throughout the fiscal year, except for cash rate.
Okay.
So we'll bring that back to you as we do other fees when we go up or down.
And then my other question was, so if somebody, the way I read this, I think I'm right. If somebody were planning and they wanted the whole community center porch, the kitchen and everything, they can't just say, they, they actually have to pay for the whole thing. If I add that up and you and people rent it, it was about $750 for the full facility because you have patio and the kitchen and the additional little room and big room. Okay, so that is how it works, right?
I don't, we did talk about having one overall range, but I think we ended up with going that route.
And that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that we couldn't say, well, I don't really need that little room, because then somebody could come in and rent that room. Because you're waiting, you know, so.
Right.
Okay. Next, how do you understand that I had that right?
Any questions to the finance sector? Same night, we have a motion to approve the, the fee schedule. I don't see, do we need a motion?
Can we, can we, can we, can we just get on there? I mean, obviously, if you have major issues, we can hear those. I wouldn't support.
So these will be included in the budget orders. So I can take action on Monday. Commissioner Coffee, wasn't the Tulsa water project the latest and greatest version of the budget? My council that we've had a couple months down to this, this item and that we allow after the budget by, by the end of this month. So if you have any questions or concerns on the budget, this is your last chance to technically say, so I think that we're going to approve this on Monday. Coffee?
Yes, sir, good evening and thank you. We are, we are to a rank of one and we're distributed, you know, you have to... Distributed to, uh, front page, front, back page, front page list of outstanding items. Some of these, you all have mentioned during budget workshops. Some of them have been issues that have come before me since presenting to you the proposed budget and what we need to address. And so if it places mayor and council, I'll just go through the list. And I am going to need some type of consensus on these items. Whether or not they're included in the budget, it'll be presented to you for approval on Monday night. So Mr. Mayor, how would you like to approach?
Why don't you just go through, I'm, I'm, we can just kind of do a head nod, consent if you will, and then we'll, I'll address it if there's not a uniform, I can hit it.
Okay, got it. All right, so we'll start off with the first item there and that's an increase for fuel costs. This is for general fund. We did check in seeing that fuel costs were not going down. We did check in with the company that provides our fuel and they are estimating about, they're actually estimating higher than this, than 50%. We've got a 30% increase in budget currently, but they are recommending that we give up on our fuel cost budget. And so that I'm proposing a $20,000 increase in the general fund on that. Additional 91 fees, we have received the, the letter from county with our amount for our 91 fees. And we initially had proposed a, basically a percentage. As you can see, we're a little bit off on that, so we need to add $969 to the budget on that. I am proposing hiring bonuses for four currently vacant firefighter and fire engineer positions. We are at four at this point. I'm recommending that we, that you approve the hiring bonuses for those positions with a distribution, basically 1,000 upon approval of, of the hiring. And then another 1,500 at, at a year after a firefighter or fire engineer stays with us a year. That distribution schedule obviously can be tweaked however you'd like to do it, if you want to.
So I know that we worked out, I believe, five positions, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then you fired one new one?
That's correct.
And we didn't, and you had, you didn't review that, so what applications can we hand up?
Problems, I guess.
There's, there's a couple of applications that we're reviewing. We're not to the point where we are, are making offers on those yet.
Question. Can you explain a little bit more about $1,000 as far as, let's see, throw more, quit a month later? I mean, is any time available for the first thousand?
They, we can, we can make that distribution schedule however we'd like to make it. Certainly, we can put some, put some requirements in there. We can make it six months, we can make, this is really flexible. I do believe that this is probably a good time to go ahead and, and put on some there for these positions because we have some period of time with all the positions. And we're, keep in mind that as we, the longer we go, the more overtime that, that currently our workers are, are using.
You could give it to them to begin with, but then say, you don't say at least six months, then your last paycheck will be garnished or something.
We could, we could do.
I would say $1,000 for a situation, six months.
Okay. We can certainly, is that consensus of council at this point that we maybe talk about?
But did I hear you say, is it just the bonus upfront or did you say there's a second?
No, no, there would be a second, or there could be actually a third. We could, we could, we, I've seen it distributed different ways. I think, see if Hendersonville's the most recent that I've seen do this and I want to say they're, they're bonus is more than 500. And I'm just talking from memory here, I want to say it's 1,500 at the higher. Another 1,500 helping out.
I think it's in six months.
Six months, okay. So in six months, another 1,500 and then the final would be a year.
Yes.
So we can really, if we could schedule this, however we'd like to do that.
There's really no downside to doing that.
That's correct.
Send your own, yes.
That's correct, that's great. A six month, just as another one of clarification, is six months is our typical probation period. So it fits well into the process that we would have had a retention by this payment at that point in time.
Very good.
Okay, so can, can somebody make sure that I understand exactly where you're going?
Thousand, six months, then the rest will be probably in a month.
All right. Is that, am I seeing pretty much consensus there? I'm sorry, I forgot, I skipped those, tried through those first two. Didn't we have consensus to look back to those?
Actually, I'll, I'm not going to object to this, but I would say, you know, first, looking at a 50% increase in fuel costs, that's very considerable. So what, what, what is we doing to reduce usage?
At this point in time, we have not put anything formal in place. However, I am looking at gathering, I'm looking at other municipalities, especially the, the, my colleagues that are working with, with the managers. And we're literally talking about, about things that we're doing. with the managers, and we're literally talking about things that we're doing or can do to limit our consumption, so it don't have a whole link, like, or.
What was the basis for the 50% increase?
It's based on the company who provides our, our gasoline. They, they estimate.
50% increase now, or based on last year?
For the fiscal, for the, for the fiscal year, over the current fiscal year that we're wrapping up now. And obviously, I mean, gasoline is not something that, that goes back, so we, I mean, we, we use it, there's no, there's no reason why, let's say, gas prices go down, that we have to spend this money. We have, as you, as you all know, we have two, two areas where we provide gas, two employees, and one's a couple of works, and this is the fire department, and for fire and police. So, this, these funds won't be spent necessarily, you can't, we can't just.
Obviously, if we're looking at spending 50% more, we'll come up with some kind of cost reduction plan with you.
Absolutely. Okay, so, am I seeing that there's consensus on those top, top two here? Okay, going down to D, I'm recommending an addition, addition of $10,000, this changes policy for the way that firefighters and also police are paid, based on a 14, 14, 14-day overtime cycle, and right now, that is a 20-day overtime, 28, excuse me, 28-day overtime cycle. I'm recommending that town council approve the change in this policy, and go from 28-day cycle to a 14-day cycle. This amount that you see there, the $10,000, is, is primarily, would primarily be toward fire department, this, there would be no additional funds for the police department, because police department employees are not regularly scheduled overtime, as the fire department is. So, that is something for, for you all to, to get into consideration.
And the 14-day plan, is this a common plan for owners?
Yes, it is.
Are there any trade-offs with that type of plan, or consequences still under that? Or is it all positive?
From, from what I've seen, and spoken to, to other folks, it's, it's a positive. It is a benefit to our, for our fighters and fire department employees to have this, this type of overtime cycle, and I believe, I mean, maybe, say, maybe only one or two, but other than that, we are the only ones left that are not paying on the 14-day cycle.
Question, do you want to listen? Very good.
Everybody's getting on that, so. Moving along to E, you've had some discussion at workshops about the addition of a town clerk, removing some of the, the tasks that our planning director currently has, so I've given some consideration to, to how we go about doing that, I've spoken with James to get his input, and we've had some good conversations about this. What I would propose to you as town council would like to go the way of hiring a town clerk, is that we add to that function. It not only is town clerk, but it also serves for our, some of our, what I would call our outreach functions, which would be newsletter, our website, our social media, those type, types of things, but also, one of the, one of the issues that, that I'm having right now, specifically, is, is having someone as a backup for Shelby down at the community center. So, a, a good example is, is now, she's on vacation, and while she's on vacation, all of that is basically pitching in together, and a lot of the worst workplace that are moving and that type of thing. So, I would think that we could rely on this position to, to hit, assist in that name to, to serve as backup for Shelby. Shelby can't be at the community center, and that all the hours that it's being rented, so.
So, what's really important, town clerk's like communication director?
I wouldn't say necessarily a communications director, but I would say certainly would fulfill some of those functions.
I was doing some research, and I found, found a description in the city of Wilmington for something called an associate planner, where they're a long-range planner, and I thought that was a pretty neat thing. And the other thing that I was looking at, I agree with you about needing somebody to help cover for Shelby somehow, some way, but I'm sure if we did that, we'd be adding, we could add more higher-level strategic planning to James, probably.
Yes.
My question is, in the state of North Carolina, is the, if it, if the title is clerk, does that report to us? Because in North Carolina, there's two or three positions that are going to you.
You can, you can do that, however, several years ago, Jennifer can tell you that they, several years ago, town council made the decision to remove town clerk from its direct responsibility to the town manager.
So, it doesn't, in theory, have to be the town clerk now? Okay.
As long as someone is fulfilling the function, we have to have a clerk, but it can be, so in essence, the position can be called anything, as long as they are also the town clerk.
But I think I remember you saying something to the effect of, one of the reasons why we didn't have town clerk for a while is because there's this long training period for them to get up to speed for so many things that they are responsible for, and then somebody is just works too nervous.
If you have, if you have, so you can, a, a town clerk, there, there are professional town clerks in, in the state, and they, they spend a lot of time in training, and you find those primarily in the larger municipalities and counties, and, and so they're, it's, it's a huge job in those larger areas. In smaller municipalities, you generally have a town clerk that's also doing something else. It, it's just, there's not enough work unless you have a, a special function.
Well, we have a tax collection. Right, what's that?
At one point in time, we've, in my time, we've gone from having a dedicated town clerk to, to me as clerk, to Jennifer, I think it was clerk at one point, we've, we've done it a number of ways. But to, to go back and answer your question, the town council can assume the, the role of, of appointing and hiring the town clerk, I think you certainly do that, if you would need to change, change the.
It's just me reading, you know? That's what I wanted to know, is that going to be another sudden work that we're responsible for, or is that somebody's going to report to you?
I will tell you that it makes it difficult if, in any type of situation where you have a reporting, situation where an employee is, is reporting to two of us, or they're reporting to me on some things, and then reporting to others, it makes it very complicated and difficult to manage.
So, the statutes do require that you have a town clerk, that the decision is who that town clerk belongs to. But, but again, the, the way we're doing it is fine, the way we previously did it is fine.
Thank you. Do we have consensus to be afforded in this area at this point?
Yep.
Let's see, F, you've already approved, you approved that tonight, so we'll skip that one, that's for the bridge funds.
It should be a negative.
Yes, it should be a negative. I, I just saw that when you said, thank you. That should be a negative.
But there's a couple more.
No, no, wait, let's see. Yes, it should be a negative. Okay, so then, let's see, G, moving along, we have, there's funding for, I've removed funding for two of the cameras, the Wi-Fi cameras, the ones that are on Main Street. Left funding in for, of $6,000 for the one camera in the parking lot. And this was raised by the mayor, that may be something that you all have a discussion about, so if, if you want to remove those, we can certainly do that at this time.
I think your question was about, some people would like to be on camera all the time, have invasion of privacy, so, that was a reason, I believe.
But if people were doing things, I shouldn't see them on Main Street, even the camera has a sketch on. I couldn't, I shot somebody right here in front of town hall with a.
I didn't, there's, there's, I've thrown a objection to people, but I think, having one in the parking lot would mean that we don't have to have an officer going to the parking lot two hours to check on who's overstaying the limit, and I think there was, there were a lot of those objections to people having one on Main Street, watching them go down Main Street. I suspect that many of the businesses on Main Street have them already anyway.
You're on the phone already. We have cameras on the phone.
And we added one because of the incident that you're talking about, that's now outside as well, so yes.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Moving along to H, this is a grant proposed by the mayor for the Weaverville Center for Creative and Healthy Living, and this will be to help them to fund, or to, to help provide stylists to performers, and to buy supplies, insurance for them, to assist them with that.
How is it managed? I mean, how would that be managed? Would they supply you bills that you would pay? Or is this a checking account that they're going to have, and then they're going to turn in reports to?
It would be provided to them, we can certainly set up some performance outcomes for them to need, and happy to, if any of you have some ideas about what those performance outcomes that might be, that would be good. Just to give you some, some information, we do provide this type of contribution to Weaverville Business Association, so this is not unusual for this, for this type of thing. In fact, we give them $5,000 to assist with art and all of the projects, and we simply, once it's approved in the budget, we give them a check.
Okay.
And so.
So, it hasn't been done before?
Yes, yes.
And at least Weaverville Community, I'm not consistent with Creative and Healthy, is a 5-1-2-3, does have to have, and let you proper report it yourself. So, it's easy for us, to give the grant. But, you know, he, I think, was on present, he was probably saying, anything would be appreciated, and he had to get down to, you know, dollar or else, but if we said, if we were to give this to your own plan, to, we'd like a description of what you plan to do, that would be appropriate.
So, just to mention this, town council will be presented with a, a new memorandum of understanding, probably in your August meeting, and my anticipation with this $5,000 grant is we'll add a, a section to that memorandum of understanding that talks about the uses of it, any limitations that seem reasonable once we're reporting on, so that they'll be required to do that.
I would, I would agree with you.
Okay. The next item, item I, this is a potential position that was discussed at one of the budget workshops for a police officer position, this amount that you see there, the $125,650 does include the wages benefits to handle vehicle, this is by key for your consideration.
This would be an addition to the chief's, if you already have one?
That's correct. When you have a, unless we want to give it on bicycle, we have.
I think a bicycle is a lot better, I think.
We did.
Very, very welcome to see you, to see a officer on bicycle, so. That's a significant increase, and I'm, I'm also curious, you know, we're, you know, mind me, help me, I hope you understand, you said, you know, we're lucky that with that stuff here, you see a reduction in driving, it's between 2% and 50% plus, does it make sense that we're actually adding some staff, and we're actually experiencing a decline?
So, so let me answer that. Chief did not request this position, and so we're providing this to you simply as a follow-up to your discussions, this is proposed for your consideration.
Good.
I mean, to me, it's not about waiting for somebody, waiting for crime to happen, you know, it's the fact that we're growing in such a crazy rate, and there's more and more stresses upon us, and for me to hear the words that we can just expect a little bit less of service or something in this area, I don't, you know, that's not okay, that, you know, most of our manpower gets used on the businesses.
Well, that's exactly why I think it's something I would, I would raise with the staff, is that, you remember that chief gave us also at last meeting, that 57% of responses go to one single customer. What we need to do, we need to make the correction there, not by any staff to subsidize that, that particular business, but so that, because they need to hire our own security guards, so we're not doing that.
And how can we do that in general? Can we do that?
Well, one thing we could do in, if the chief had a budget, well, we could, I would recommend that we start off this process by simply going to that customer saying, we're not going to do this anymore, you need to hire our security guard, and that's why they'll say, okay, I don't think it's unusual. Yeah, at least they have the conversation.
The mayor and I have spoken some about that as a, as a upcoming project to, to sort of tackle, tackle that one particular retail business, and see if we can kind of find a, a way to better, better address that, and so I do anticipate it back to you as soon.
So, we could look at a certain way to pass it, but I suspect they're just having a conversation, and that's silly, my producer desired it all, and then, and then, and then I could maybe have a little visit with them, convince them to do that.
That's wonderful, Patrick, Ron has something to say, because he's.
And, and to put it in a larger context, it's not just that business, it's everything that is growing within our town limits and everything that's growing roughly outside of our town limits. I'll give you an example, Aitken Road, how many apartments are they putting out this year? Not in Weaverville, they're going to shop somewhere, they're going somewhere. All of that, as you know, taxes our infrastructure, but there's stuff that is passed, and I'll point to State Bill 300, there's more and more requirements, and it's taking more and more time on every call that we go to, so it's not, it's not just one location, it's all locations, it's everything. So, when I say diminish of service, it, it's coming. What's that, that's going to look like without freaking everybody out, it's, it's coming, it's inevitable, unless we have more manpower. That's, we're, we're trying to do stuff that I consider force multipliers, the camp on Main Street, for example, but those are some stuff that we can, but nothing substitute an officer, an officer, and, and in a larger context, not just that one.
I guess for me, the thing that feels a little, because I hear what you're saying, and I agree, but it, at the same time, if we don't have a formula or metric that says when you get to this point, triggers another headcount.
We provided that last, with that metric, it was in the last, I'm sorry, I'm getting my meetings confused with that, and that formula that we have, that was based on the North Carolina Justice County Chiefs of Police Association, that said patrol officers, that it was three officers that we were, we shouldn't have three more officers standing to.
Right, that's what we're, we should have three and more, but it didn't ask for it.
And we also have the benefit that we have, previously were paying for a school, we maintain our position, but we're not, we're not assigning a specific to the schools anymore, so we actually need some extra staff there as well, correct?
If, yes and no, that position can be utilized, we try to dedicate that position to the extent that we can at those schools, we try to do that, and do that between two officers, so.
Essentially, we add an extra staff, time, by reducing the time we, our.
And also the organizational chart, that to try and move some of that, as you know, moving that to try to make it work, which is try to see if we can do this with existing manpower. I have no illusions that we'll make more.
I think it feels a little maybe sequence here. I think the idea of having a formal discussion with, you know, retail, it's probably long over there, right? And you know, this could have a great partnership agreement. And if a lot of the elephant in the room here is anticipated, you know, needs because of that, and we haven't done that yet, while we're going ahead and adding a headcount, I'm just wondering, could we have that conversation with an option to revisit the budget or an in-budget addition if that doesn't go along?
Absolutely. I always had...
There were the voices later, based on the recommendations from the police chief. And since the police chief had a question in the first place, I should say this is something we can defer.
I'm hearing you say that you have a conversation with this person, this place, this store. And they might do this, or we could do this, or it might happen, and it might not. So I think it's a little early to say that we're going to be able to talk to them and get them to hire a resource, a officer or whatever. We don't know that.
Well, we could do, we could wait to have this, which we actually got to have. And actually try the opportunity.
Well, we have to remember also one thing. We are, with the mall in this town today, we are a regional shopping center. We grow people with... I don't know what percentage, I'd say of the residents, very few of residents. A lot run out of town, shut up. So this is a significantly, we've got two stores, Harvey Lobby, and then those stores come in in the fall. It's just a regional area. We've got the actual Justice City almost. So it's very close.
So let me just say, why did I recommend it? I asked the chief if I could cut down for 30 minutes one day. And so we sit. And I wanted to understand why it is that I really don't see a lot of police officers in Weaverville, along Main Street, in the area, and why I see them over at Walmart all the time. And so it was eye-opening to me for me to hear that, you know, I mean, when you live here forever and you just grow the way you do, you don't think about us being this regional hub for a lot of people to come. But there's not so many restaurants in Maricel or Marshall or Woodburne's. So the people come here to eat. And then that causes some traffic accidents and some clusters. And then they don't have the variety of grocery stores per se that we do. They don't have the Walmart. They don't have the Lowe's. So it really became obvious to me that we truly are this little town that gets 20,000 people a day to come in and buy stuff, you know, and running out with traffic and stuff like that. So that's why, you know, I tried to twist his arm to get him to recommend it, and he wouldn't.
And I think that's because he doesn't really need it. Especially if we look at ways to reduce his staff and to spend at Walmart, writing up travel tickets. We'd have tons of drive, sort of, if we were driving on the street instead of spending time more in parks and Walmart.
It's the residents that pay the taxes and all the business that's getting the benefit of having the police, and yet...
That's right. So that's why I was suggesting we look at ways to reduce the amount of police time spent. If you have Walmart or other places that are shopping, we could do something by making arrangements with the managers of facilities. If that doesn't work, we could look at passing ordinance, saying, we're not going to spawn in shopping with them anymore.
Well, we have another thing, and that's basically required. That's a lot of time going through, you know?
And they don't require, they don't have to have police officers on the drive with those tickets and costs that have to be done processing. They can get their own security forces, could do that. Is that correct?
To an extent, they can do that. They still, and this, they don't want, and only, well, he said they don't want a confrontation out there to go back. That's why they'll call, invariably call the police officer, the overwhelming amount of times out there, of course. I'm not exactly sure what the overwhelming amount of time a police officer goes out there. But yes, they can do that to make sense, but then it becomes identification of the individual that's out there, their cooperation level, things like that. They're going to have to get that data in. I'm not sure of their capabilities to do that as a company, as a company to do that. But also, again, bear in mind, we, it's not just one location. It is collectively everybody that is putting a burden on this town. If an officer makes one arrest, they go to Buncombe County. Buncombe County is short, I think it's 80-something officers right now. Most of those are in the jail. We will wait a long period of time with that person to process one person into the jail, regardless of one location.
So I understand all that, chief. But is it not true that 57% of the ones that go into one location? So even on what we did, if we're making it, if we're making our own security forces, we're going to see a significant reduction in your staff time? It's a spotlight on the thing you just described.
57% of the lawsuits, not 50% of our calls, 57%.
And by us reducing that, reducing that, it will sort of benefit your business.
But if they didn't hire, if you had this conversation, and if they didn't hire a security person, and if we hadn't come up with this policy that you're saying, like actual businesses of crime show up, just write it up, we're creating even more crime in that area than already exists in that area.
How's that?
Because it'll be blatant that we're not going to do anything about it. So it'll just go wild, isn't it?
Well, it feels sort of like doing this by a field rather than, you know, I mean, I think it's significant that the manager, I just really respected the fact that you were trying to do more with less in the budget, didn't ask for it, and now we need this council, and then basically saying, well, the county manager, this is better for you, so we're going to have an audit.
No, that was not, I was not trying to say I know your business better than you. If the statistical report, we all look at data. We have beat data to death on water and fire. And yet we let our chief of police come in here and say, statistics tells us we should have three more people, but because you, council, don't want to increase the budget, I'm not going to ask for one. So I asked for it, but I'm okay with you going to talk, and I'm okay with you trying to get him to do a security guard, and I just hope it doesn't get worse.
I also took 33 flexibility. I'm looking at considerations.
The next item is J. Another item that was raised during budget workshops, and it's just a potential human resource position. This one was raised because in our pretty budget presentation, we talk about the future and the future need for this. And so I've added it to the list as a potential addition, and you can discuss it.
I'm scratching my head going, at what point does this make sense? You know, organization our size, I mean, we have more HR issues because of, probably because of COVID and things you had to do. We did a great job on, that's kind of my aim. So I know a lot of times you access HR functions. I mean, HR outsourcing companies are down a dozen. So it seems, I'm struggling with getting a full-time body to just do HR.
And I did not include it in my recommended budgets, just for your discussion.
We spend a lot of money on these down a dozen companies, so we'll just... Just like Jeff said, you know, we got down a dozen companies out there that can do this.
Well, we're not starting anything on that.
But we need to. I mean, Tanya said, and Tanya said here and told us that they're maxed out, and that there's all the, and that she's actually having to do HR, and that she's having to do all these functions that are on top of her normal job description. I heard somebody say we're at like 125% of the stress level, of the hours that you're going into something.
That's planning.
Okay. It's fine. It's fine. I mean, you know, budget lasts us a long, long time.
I think, so this is something that also, I would think that this is similar to the previous position. We can all reprise it if it's proven to be an issue, we can add later, but it sounded like it wasn't requested by the staff, and it's not an pressing issue anymore.
Well, I remember during that, Jeff also said you could outsource some stuff.
Yeah, I was asking if you could. I wouldn't presume that you could, but you were talking about a lot of fees that we collect for their, the Marshall laws, bringing up the question.
We lived in, we talked about the payroll. We can't outsource our payroll because of our requirements with the state retirement system. So government, government accounting, government, things like that, we are very limited on what we can outsource.
That's unfortunate too, because, you know, quite every company almost does that, outperform their HR staff at a pretty affordable price that's, we can't do this.
We can't, payroll, it costs, it wasn't cost beneficial because of the requirements with the state retirement system.
So you're saying we cannot house that stuff? Okay. So that means we're keeping the camera?
That, unless there's consensus to add that, at this point in time, that wraps up the general fund. Where that puts us is $8,002.19. So that number on your back there can be changed. First of all, it's changed. It goes down to 2,9219. That's adding the negative in front of that 20,000 or two, thank you, Councilman Jackson. And, but then the $8,0219 covers the items A through H. Still looking for nods ahead. We're good. Okay. All right. So moving then to item L. This shows another increase for fuel costs for the, this is for the water line. Another 50% there. Still consensus. Moving to the next, M. Addition for rate increases for purchase of chemicals. Trent did hear from his vendors who notified that chemicals are on the rise in the upcoming budget. And so I would recommend that we add $10,000 to the chemical line within the water fund budget. The next item is item N. Addition of lawn maintenance contracts. Public Works has indicated that they can no longer provide the landscaping and lawn maintenance at the water treatment plant grounds. So we have gotten a quote for $15,000 for that grant. Again, that is a, that's a rough quote. I am not comfortable with that, with that amount. But I'm also not comfortable with asking our employees to do that work either. This is in a terrible liability position to have them doing it, talking about the water treatment plant employees.
So is the issue just physical bodies to do it and hours?
Yes. We're maxing out our public works employees, and we're getting ready to add our recreation complex, so they're going to, they are going to have quite a bit more upkeep on grounds.
Very good. Here's your lawn mower.
Except the lawn mower. That's not the issue. It's the bodies. The next, I O. Councilman Dale raised the issue of using ARP funds to fund the water treatment plant equipment. As you recall, within the current, within the proposed project, there are two generators and the conversion project included in there. And the way that I recommended it to you is basically using fund balance to pay for that. Councilman Dale proposed using ARP funds, so I'm bringing it to you. If you do decide to fund that, you'll see P, which is basically removing the fund balance appropriated if you use ARP funds.
You know, I gotta say that we were looking at vaccinations for water, for future water system, and some of those things are going to have costs associated with them. I don't know what we're going to save our ARP funds for those projects and leave this as a budget out of a lot of, I don't have strong feelings about that, but that seems to be a better decision.
Yeah, and I might just say that because also we can use that for the, I think we can use it for hiring bonuses and retention bonuses. We can use it for premium pay, premium pay. Well, it's just over time.
Oh, okay.
Basically, there are two trunks of cash that we have at hand to use, so whether it comes from one or the other.
Does it, does it, the bottom line is?
One thing to keep in mind is if we leave it as its budgeted recommendable and we receive the grant for the drinking water, state revolving fund, that fund balance will not be used. And that's why I recommended the way that I have, not using the ARP funds.
That was smart on the part.
Is there consensus to remove those or to leave it as is?
To do as you recommend.
The fund balance, we're going to...
So the fund balance will handle this and not the ARP.
Unless we get that state revolving fund. Good for us, gentlemen. All right. The next item is Q, which you approved earlier this evening. It should be R. It is the addition, and this is basically a balancing number. This balances...
We leave it as it is. We leave the capital projects getting funded by...
That's right. That's right. So first number? That is, that is all of the overview. It's, the difference is 228,600. I'm asking Tanya to double check general numbers here, so we have a running number for you. And that's of that, just to recap, that includes funding of the $4,000 for the fuel cost increase to $10,000 for purchase of chemicals, to $15,000 for lawn maintenance That is all for the overview of the budget. And I think, thank you for giving the nod and the consensus that we're able to get tonight, so that we can present to you a budget that we're going to do well for the town.
You know, lawn maintenance thing, if you check the Council, I think I got those a real lot of things from, they're on there on it.
They do that. I love those things.
I haven't seen it in a couple of years.
Yeah.
Well, I know...
I wonder if I went around the road in front of somebody.
He said they were pretty happy.
The lowest was about $725.
Really?
I saw a really big one, but it was a guy who had a remote control. It was huge, and it was right at the, you know, where you were coming from, Weaverville, Bowie to Ashville, and just as you take the exit to go across the Smoky Heart Bridge, he was on that whole section there next to the hillside park and follow up. And it was huge. I mean, it was 10 feet wide and 10 feet long or whatever, and he was just standing there with his remote control.
It would work the conversation.
It certainly would. I wouldn't be concerned about that, but there's some pretty steep inclines out there. I mean, what I should have selected out of our electronic lawn...
Want to have a river on the hill?
That doesn't mind me differently.
So the whole interesting happens is the thing falls on the rivers. Thank you for that, for that update on Andrew Coffey. So we, this is an opportunity, I think, if they're getting into budgets at this point, you'd like to, if you think there's a, or an issue or questions of, as I was mentioning, if you pass a budget at a meeting this week. So this is your, as they say, the preacher says your last chance to object. And we're still looking at revenue neutral from a tax standpoint?
Yes, yes. And then increase, the only, the only difference really that this is going to make is the use of fund balance for the items that they have.
Everybody comfortable? Yeah.
Exhale, I'm recording.
Yes. No, you kind of said everything that we can't ship, but.
Yes.
Uh, so thank you again, Tom, Tom. Um, at this point, we need to go into closed session and, uh, we have to turn to you.
All right, so a motion, um, to go into closed session as allowed by number one on the general statute, section one forty three dash three eighteen point eleven eight six, in order to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or employment of an individual public officer or employee, and section one forty three dash three two one eleven eight five, in order to establish a decision to be taken by the public body concerning compensation and other material terms of an employment contract or post-employment contract. Consider it accepted.
Second?
Second.
All favorites said aye.
Aye.
Imposed. Make sure we, 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 uh, do a little bit of small conference.
Okay, Councilmen, welcome back to the town office session again. And is there a motion to be made, Councilmen?
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to add the town manager with an annual salary of $120,000 beginning July 1st and continue to accrue benefits. Are you in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there another motion, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the town manager's employment agreement and provide an annual salary of $85,000 and have her to be an employee of the town with all the benefits associated with it effective July 1st.
Is there a second motion?
A second.
On favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Good deal, motion passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies, for your turn.
We love you, guys. Thank you.